Okay, it's Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. It's five o'clock and we're going to start the Towns Saginaw Select Board meeting. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just for all.
Approval of the select board meeting minutes six twenty-one, twenty-three.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second in favor, all three. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants payroll fifty-four, fifty-six, and accounts payable fifty-five.
Make a motion approves red.
Second.
All in favor, all three. Open session, I don't believe we have anybody for open session. Old Business Town Hall Building.
Not much, I've given you the deeds so far that I've been able to find for the parking lot and fire station. I'm going to register deeds tomorrow, so we'll see about what I can find out for the town office itself, the town building. And then I'm going to reach out to a realtor tomorrow.
Okay. Those two we discussed, or did you have somebody in mind? Doesn't matter.
No, I think the two that we discussed, one of those two, yeah.
Yep, good. Did you, have you had any conversation with Sam yet?
Just that brief one, because he's over in Alaska for three weeks.
Oh, that's right.
He's built a camp for three weeks, he'll be back at the end of July.
So which one, is it clear what's what when we read these?
This one.
Because it's, I mean.
Is the parking lot.
Oh, this is the parking lot.
Yeah, no, I believe that is the fire station.
And this is the fire station. So is this just a piece of property that the fire station said?
Yeah, I just, she was making copies for us of it.
Okay, alright. Now, you said the fire station was built in seventy-four?
I think it's something like that on from the buildings, in nineteen seventy-four, five.
Okay.
I can verify.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, so this, they sold this to us, I mean, I'll read it, but, before we built this, yeah, okay.
Say that again?
Well, no, that, that, this is the deed for the piece of property that, before we built this. Was there a building here prior to that?
I don't know, but that's dated seventy-six.
Oh, is it seventy-six, so maybe?
That's about right, it's mid-seventies.
Okay.
Okay. And it remains to be seen how much interest the realtors would have with the conditions, essentially, but I think it's worth the effort, we'll see.
Just get a conversation going anyways.
Yeah. New Business Fire Department, do we want to wait?
If we could, we can, Chad asked if we could wait for him to roll, and he was thinking he'd be here a little bit before six.
Okay. We're gonna have to really talk.
He's gonna get as fast as he can.
No, it's all good. Cemetery deed?
Yeah, we take a break.
So, I'd like to make a motion, we have a sale of a plot, to sell part four, plot fourteen in the village cemetery to Harold Rolfe.
Second that motion. All in favor, and it passes.
So we will sign, go ahead and sign it.
We will sign it.
And I'll follow it with a registry. What, did I sign it online?
No.
What?
My smudger signature.
Oh, shoot.
I hate signing these.
You wanna, because I just smudged.
You won't have to smudge too.
This isn't very smudgy.
I hope not.
It looks like this one is what you have.
Okay, I'll use yours. I'll stay away from yours.
Twenty-twenty-three tax commitment.
They were committed on July, no, June, I'm sorry, June twenty-ninth. And for anyone listening with, the people with the stabilization, their tax bill will look just the same as it did last year, take your two and a half percent, the state's gonna make one payment to the town in December, so they don't pay interest, they just make one payment, and that's done through Journal. Yeah, so, what you see for your tax bill, your stabilization, is what you, that's last year's.
It's already in there.
It's already in there.
Okay.
So they didn't actually get to see what their true tax.
They didn't see what they saved.
No, because the state doesn't have the form ready, for one, doesn't have the form ready yet, so Josh made up a nice, because believe it or not, we had a hundred and fifty-eight people, and he sent that to the state to show what we have coming for.
My only thing, I guess, is, I mean, it's great for those people this year, because they are gonna see that, they're not gonna know it, but they got a huge reduction this year in their taxes.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to, it's, it's a little over a hundred dollars per thousand, so if you look at your tax bill and you owe three thousand, you saved over three hundred bucks compared to your neighbor who, now, the town's gonna get that money back, and it does look like that the state has already agreed to cancel this program, before it has a birthday.
So now you're heading to where I'm headed, so right now, you're gonna have people that are gonna see a tax bill, they have no idea what the real tax bill is, because they're only showing what they paid last year. So they're already three hundred and, and then if we have another increase next year, they're gonna get a huge bump.
Yeah.
Well, this year's was just shy of twenty, next year, I mean, I'd be happy if it was only a ten percent increase based on what we're experiencing right now, so these people are gonna be looking at probably a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in one year, it's gonna be sticker shock.
Right, because I mean, our total, what did you say our total number was? Of dollar value that we're getting back from the state?
I think it's like twenty-seven thousand, something like that.
So.
I mean, it's a big chunk.
Yeah, it's a third of a mil.
Those hundred and fifty-eight people are gonna pay that twenty-seven thousand dollars and more next year.
Correct, correct.
So.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
It's the same as last year. So that's why I did put on the agenda, so that when we put it on the website, people can see the difference of the tax rate comparison for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, where we went from a fifteen point nine four mil rate to an eighteen point four five. It just kind of breaks down the increase, and then, because our revenues decreased point nine percent.
Sure. Yeah, that's pretty, that's, glad you did that.
Yeah, that's good, that's very nice.
So I mean, for people listening, the county taxes were an eleven percent increase this year, and they were that much last year. School budget was thirteen, your municipal population, in other words, just what it takes to run the town was a six percent increase, that's just about inflation.
Yeah. And the revenues are down.
Yep.
Right, so my theory, you got just fifteen percent right there.
Yeah, well, it's not gonna get easier.
Yeah.
Okay. Road Commissioners Report.
So Gulf Road's been all coal patched, and Brockway has been brought in small gravel, and that's been all smoothed out, next one. He is, I talked to Chris today, he is planning on doing Severs Mills next week, because we're gonna hope that no rain, he doesn't really, so that should be next week, and we're also talking on the Thomas Road.
Okay.
I can get a quote on that.
Did Chris and Warren do the coal patch on Gulf?
No, no, that was me and Mr. Bell.
Oh.
Did the coal patch, and the coal patch that we did last year on Gulf Road held up very well, you can see.
You did it yourself?
Yeah. Yep, we get it, I get, I ordered a thermal patch from White Cap in Bangor.
Yep.
And, yeah, so it was three hundred dollars, six hundred pounds.
That's a job I wonder if her new helper, Nick, could possibly do. He did a good job on that tree.
Yeah, he did, yeah. Oh, yeah, and by the way, all the signs are posted down there.
Have you guys seen those signs?
The ones down at landing?
We got them from the sheriff.
No, 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 I haven't got those signs, I have the one for the sheriff, you know, for the drug, drug-free zone.
Is it at the park?
Yeah.
Oh, I was there yesterday, was it there yesterday?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
Well, we put them up yesterday afternoon, yesterday afternoon. I do think we need to consider blocking, we moved a few rocks a little bit, because there was a couple vehicles at the dam that I would really question as to why they're really there.
The problem is, is they put those rocks in and people move them.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, I think.
So they're movable, I mean, how we get it?
Some of them are big, but you can see they, they literally moved the rock to go, but I would.
You can move some of these anyway.
Oh, so we need big rocks?
Yeah, there's some bigger rocks that could be moved, but I, I think it's worth doing.
Has anybody checked the dam to see if it's, I haven't been tampered with?
The water's very high.
Yeah.
It's still blowing right over the dock.
Yeah, yeah, but the board probably shouldn't be there, or somewhere, there is a board, isn't there?
Yeah, it's still so high, you can't even get there with anything. If it ever stops raining, I'll go look at it.
Maybe it'll freeze up.
That could happen too.
And I did send you an email regarding French Mills.
Yeah.
Did you see that?
Yeah, I don't know how Heartland got in front of us, we were scheduled last year, but whatever.
What, for patch, for patching, yeah.
Do we, I was interrupt, but we still need repairs down to the dam.
Yep.
Like, I had a floodplain manager in me, the state floodplain manager, and she said there's a county hazard mitigation plan, it's a FEMA PC emergency plan that you can apply for grants, and it's for just that such thing.
I mean, I think that's the one last I knew Saginaw signs up, because I heard, I don't know, I heard you didn't.
Oh.
I'm not sure if we have or not. I've never had them come here and ask us to sign it, I know that.
No, and I've never seen.
Would you have a need?
There's funds available for that type of thing.
The biggest thing with that wasn't the expense, it was the logistics of draining that pond.
Correct.
That was, I mean, we had gotten to close.
Cost is minimal, really.
Yeah, it was like, it was four or five thousand dollars, wasn't it? It was, okay, when do we drain the pond?
Right, it's getting the right people in place so that you do this, and the protected snails that are on the shoreline don't get endangered, or whatever, to minimize the liability.
And.
The resource protection area.
It's such a shallow lake.
It is.
When we do this repair.
Turns into a river.
It turns into a brook.
Turns back into a stream, but originally a pond.
So, you know, thousands of nesting birds and fish and all, I don't know, bass fishing would be pretty good in a couple pools.
Yeah, 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 but you're not even gonna be able to get to them.
Well, you'll, you're gonna be a mud buggy.
Yeah, yeah, big, big weight.
Mud buggy.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But no, there are pools there that will be actually, the fish will die in them, because they won't have any oxygen.
Correct.
So I don't, but I don't know what the environmental steps are, it's one thing to say, yeah, you got the money, can we do it now, or when can we do it, or, they might want us, there might be a certain time of year they want us to do it, I don't know, those are the questions really we were looking for answers.
Are you working that into like a trophy pond for the bass, are they gonna have some kind of say on that?
Because even that, there's all kinds of stuff coming about, and actually, I mean, the dam in Guilford, that's already scheduled to go out, I was just reading in the article this weekend, now they're after the dam in Dover by the mill.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Are you kidding?
They're going after, the reason why that dam has never been approached was the whole time that was, who said? That was hydroelectric.
Oh, yeah.
They still have the generator.
It's not, it's not hooked up, it's unserviceable, so I think, I'm guessing, but it sounded to me like they're gonna push.
It's all fish migration.
To get, to be able to get that generator system up and going, or if it's not, then they'll, they'll try to push to take the dam.
Won't be landing a plane there anymore.
Real estate.
And make a stream all the way through.
Yeah, I don't even know if they'll make a stream.
Is this all for fish migration?
Yep, salmon.
Yeah, they're gonna migrate when there's no water.
Right.
They did in Augusta when it was down there.
Yeah, they're doing it, well, that's the big thing in Guilford, that's why, you know, they're, right now, they're attracting salmon and abit, so they're getting up through the dam in Guilford.
What happened to fish ladders, why is that?
Well, it's.
Not efficient.
It's not efficient, and honestly, they're a pain in the butt to maintain.
The fry, yeah.
There's another dam though, right at the other end of town.
Yep.
So I'm not sure how much difference it's gonna make, now, that dam is, that looks like a hydroelectric dam.
So I think that's part of this, is if there's still a hydro piece, it's not as easy to move, so they kind of, you know, either you're gonna be hydro or you're not, and if you're not, okay, do we need it? You don't have a purpose anymore, we need to push it back to.
I mean, the vertical decline from one end of town to the other is significant.
Yeah, it sure is.
Probably drop, who said that for?
I doubt, I don't, I'm not sure how that works, I mean, I've, I've been over here down Mill Street, in the summertime, you can walk right across the stream, and that dam has still got water behind it.
Right.
So it's not.
In Guilford, it'll get, it'll get to the point that water will not go over the dam, and, but I mean, there's always a.
You can still land your plane down here.
Yeah. Now, when you take the dam out, or if you took that dam in Dover out, and you lose that reservoir, that's now you put that.
That could change all the FEMA floodplain maps, and they just went through and hit them all with lightar.
Are you kidding?
So that's part of that.
It'll be interesting.
So your dam, there would no longer be a boat launch up here on your way to Abbott, which is.
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be.
Four, four and a half square meters.
Center Pond's next.
It's not a deal.
Just kidding, it's a berm.
Is it a dam, you sound?
It's, it is, well, if you listen to everybody on the pond, it's a dam.
They just had somebody who made a classifying, they said it was a spillway.
All it is is when, I mean, that's a handmade pond, when they built the pond, that's a bunch of rocks pushed up, and originally, there was a, there was a grist mill.
If you stand in the water in front of the spillway, it's up to your ankles, so it's not really, it's not holding back much.
There was a grist mill was there, there was actually, you can still see some if you go over there, there was, there was boards drove in, on that whole side is the dam, and then it was rocks behind it, and it does leak more now than before, but I think it's, I mean, it's over the years, you've lost a lot of fines.
The lake, the lake is as high or higher than always has been.
It's as high right now, spring, I'm almost telling you.
My dog's out in the water, you know, spring is usually up there.
It's up there.
It'll, it'll drop until it's in the center of the pond.
Do we want recess?
No, we have a couple things we talked about.
Select board concerns?
There you go.
Go ahead.
Alright, so I sent you a picture. Yep, so that is on the Anderson Road, the town road, and that used to say Vetter, and now it says Hall Road. So I'm guessing, I didn't drive up, I'm guessing the sign that was at the Hall Road, meaning when you drove down Vetter, the Hall Road went to the right, I'm guessing they removed that sign and moved that from the end of the Vetter, and the Vetter sign is now longer.
Are these private ways?
Yeah.
Yes. But they're part of the nine-one-one, part of our signage, our signs.
So there's a procedure. And do you know if all the people with right of way on that road were notified of the name change?
No, the person actually approached the town manager, and we talked about this last year, about renaming the road to Elset Mill.
Oh.
So then somebody took it upon themselves to pick.
Kind of like the board in our dam.
Same, same idea.
So what are they gonna do about it?
Town can do nothing, really.
Well, it's our sign.
Oh, is it, we put a, we put a sign on a private way?
We've signed all of our nine-one-one roads. It's for emergency service.
Correct, so they're our signs.
So, somebody put a.
I am guessing, I didn't drive down, I can, but you have the Towns Anderson Road that comes down.
Right.
The Town Road stops, this gets super confusing, so the Town Road say stops here, this road went up, this was Vetter Road, and then, which goes direct to the Vetter Camp, and then.
Front end.
Front end, next conversation. And then there's a road off this side, that was the Hall Road.
Oh, okay.
And originally, the Hall Road went over here to my camp, which now, when you, Anderson Road is the Town Anderson Road, turns and goes to the private Anderson Road.
Oh, God.
Well, honestly, if I was gonna rename a road in this whole area, that's the road I would rename. The Town Road stops, and there's a camp road with the same name as the Town Road, so that part's clunky, I mean, if anything is clunky, it's that, but, so anyway, Anderson turns right, goes in and makes a hard left, and this is still, this is considered Anderson, the same as the Town Road is, and then the Hall Road used to come straight across here, cross the Vetter Road, and went to my camp.
Okay, so where's the new Hall Road sign now?
The new one, they removed the Vetter sign.
And put it there?
No, it was on a, it was on a legitimate post.
Really? They unbolted it.
And put it there?
They put it here, and so now, they're saying this is all.
Someone took the sign.
Yeah.
So we have a renaming without permission and a theft.
Yes.
They took the Vetter Road sign.
It's, it's not there, it's not laying on the ground, so.
Who knows where it went.
Correct, it went somewhere, and it's not where it was.
So, and, so, so they're claiming that now this is all Hall Road.
Correct.
Do these roads also have a fire lane designation?
Well, that'd be the next problem, no, all fire lane roads technically went away.
Yeah, when they switched to nine-one-one, they went from fire lane to names.
To names.
But you could leave the fire lane if you wanted to?
No, because.
Because I still see them out there.
You're not supposed to be any fire lane roads in Saginaw because they all.
Oh, just Saginaw.
So, well, Saginaw went with names, not fire lanes.
Okay.
So there shouldn't be a fire lane, because, and I have a, we have a fire lane on our camp, my camp road, they put it up high for nostalgia, because that's what it always was, but for me, we all know what the road's called, but say, for instance, Matt, I mean, if you came down, not really knowing, you look up quick, oh, it's fire lane this, so when you call it a nine-one-one, you say fire lane, they're not gonna have a clue what you're talking about, because everything to do with fire.
Put a bag on and strip the threads.
Dexter, their names, they, they put them in alphabetical order, if you go over Zion Hill Road, they're, so at least you know roughly how far out you are when you hear it. But they transferred from fire lanes, I didn't realize that was a law, a law that had to be followed.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, we probably still could call them fire lanes, if that's what we choose.
You could, yeah.
Oh, it's a local.
Yeah.
When you decide which way you're gonna go, you don't want where you go out.
Right, it's whenever E nine-one-one came and whatever you wanted to rope us.
So this messing with the signs, there is a, there is a possibility that ambulance or fire truck could get sent to the wrong place.
Yes, or they couldn't find you, turn around.
Yeah, just could not find them.
Yeah, because they're not gonna find Vetter anywhere.
They're not gonna find Vetter, Vetter's what's on the map.
The only reason that we'd be finding it is some of the people that have been around forever.
Right.
Right.
Yep, right, but I can see if nine-one-one says you go down Anderson and you turn onto Vetter, they're gonna come down Anderson if nobody's not familiar.
And go right, blow right past.
You're gonna blow right past Hall, gonna go past Anderson that goes up, they're gonna, because now this road goes all the way out here, that's Carl Road. So that's, that's what I was saying, as far as, that's the other part of the confusion, the Town Road stopped, Carl, and then discontinued, if you go straight, what you would think would be the same road, that's not, that's a different one, you turn right.
But you only see this Carl Road if you're coming off.
Anderson, off my camp road.
Needs to be turned.
So, in Dexter, like I said, the town named those roads, they, then they came up with a strategy, they alphabetized them. Do you think we have the authority to do that?
We did that.
We, so these roads, Vetter, we came up with Vetter?
Yes. If you drive straight into that road, you drive to Vetter Camp.
I don't know how they did it, like my mother's road, she owns the road, all fifty acres of it, and it didn't get named after her.
Yeah, come on, I didn't come up with Brockway, is what I did.
Molten, the Molten Road was my camp road, and then there used to be a Molten residence a mile up the road.
Right, I don't know.
So the, the, the select board at the time, I'm guessing, or the planning board, went and named these things.
Yeah, whoever, whoever, it was a town, something, whoever was in charge of E nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And this has come up, remember, we had one not that long ago, it was somebody.
Is this your favorite neighbor, neighbor?
It would be somebody that I have some issues with, yes.
There's only one or two possibilities?
On this?
Yeah.
I'd say there's only one.
Saying, well, I mean, she just told him the other day that it didn't get renamed.
Oh, you've had this conversation?
How many camps have that left?
Well, I had a conversation with them last week, I had a conversation with them last year, because they didn't like that one of the tax bills said Vetter Road, I said, well, it's on the Vetter Road, I compromised and said, okay, some of the property's on Vetter, and some of that property's on Hall, the only thing I'm gonna do is, it's gonna be called zero, Vetter Hall Road, as to wait, just listed the acres, eight acres on Vetter and Hall Road, and that's what I did.
So his concern was that he wasn't getting the name he wanted on his tax.
I think the concern is, they wanna, I think the concern is they wanna own that whole section and don't want people on that road, is what they really, that's the main function.
Oh, now, I'll go ahead.
So should she call him and ask him if he changed it?
I can, I will reach out tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, are there camps, camps along this road?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, so it doesn't affect anyone as far as their, okay.
No, they actually own that property.
Okay.
All the way up through there, and then Vetter.
That's why.
Vetter was a split.
They feel like they should be like, maybe.
That's right, that's right, right.
And you don't get everything you want.
No.
So anyway, that was one thing, and you started in with another conversation.
Yeah, I've been working on the Vetter Camp, because it's an abandoned camp, and it's got structural issues.
Sure does.
So I got ahold, finally got ahold of.
HUD.
Guardian Asset Management.
Yep.
That, there's two Guardians, one does the taxes, one does maintenance, four HUD, and that's the only way I've been able to find a way through this. I got a call from her today, and they, they had sent, at my request, they sent somebody out to look at the building, assess the repair costs, blah, 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 she sent me back today, wanted to know if I could get contracted emails to come up with bids for demolition for tomorrow's building.
See, there's something, something up here.
Well, the problem is, he's still not, to me, he's not, number one, we're still not talking with HUD, but my thought, yes.
Still not talking to HUD.
Correct.
This is federal HUD.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
But they haven't. Why have they gotten this far?
They've got these properties, thousands, all across the country.
Sure, I talked to Paul about this, they're, they got an office right in Augusta, it's not that, they're not untouchable, we're in a region, when I talked to Paul Davis about this last fall, but my concern is, is if they go in there and tear that camp down.
It's probably gone forever.
You could never.
Correct, correct, it's too close.
Every, every building that's one hundred percent destroyed is in consideration to be made conforming, which the law is probably a hundred, maybe.
This camp is six feet from Charlie's.
But there, but there can be possessions if they're gonna tear it down and rebuild, like say somebody owned it, they're gonna tear it down, rebuild it.
It's got a full basement too, doesn't it?
It's a full wooden basement.
It's a daylight basement.
It's a daylight basement, it was a beautiful camp at one time.
It would sell like that.
Oh, of course it would.
So HUD doesn't wanna sell it.
Right.
But not only that.
That's that big place, isn't it?
Oh, it's huge.
One, it's like, yes, I remember seeing it in the water.
Yeah, there's insulation falling into the water, it's.
Yeah, well, the way the deck is built, it's, the supports are actually gonna cannably build a whole thing.
Yeah, when it goes, it's going in the pond, it's not coming away. But my concern is, is if they tear that down.
It's lost, lost taxes.
It's lost for us forever, because you're not gonna.
How do we have it, he said?
Why can't we push harder to get a hold of HUD?
HUD is, HUD is.
It's not gonna sell.
No, they're, they're the maestro right here, they're, they want this thing down, they want the taxes to go away, they could care less about that property.
They don't care about the taxes.
No.
I still think it's worth a conversation with HUD to try to push it.
I could put the bug in your ear.
Well, no, I, I'd buy the place, I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
If they, if they, for whatever reason, they have a strategy, they don't wanna sell these properties, I was reading articles, they're all over the country.
There's another one on Silver's Mills.
And they pay?
Yeah, if we have two in Saginaw, can you imagine how many there are?
Well, there's two in Saginaw that I know about.
Right.
I'm not, and there may be more, I don't know.
I know, I see a lot of abandoned buildings that are around, I mean, some on.
I personally wrote a check for the one on Silver's Mills to HUD, I knew the person that was involved in it, and what that could be bought for, and I, I went inside under the permission from them, talking with HUD, took pictures, had a buy-sell agreement drawn out, and sent them a check for that house.
Did they send it back?
Never saw her, they said they never got it. So.
Guess that's no go.
Seriously, I'm not kidding you.
It, I have no idea what they're gonna do with these properties, but it makes you think that all of a sudden, they can start moving people from around the country to new locations, because this is all federal property.
They're still gonna be paying taxes on the land, they pay every year.
But when the building's gone, nobody can build a building back there.
Right.
Yeah, no.
If the land's gone, there's a certain amount of time.
Will go down.
Sure, the tax for the town just went down forever, it could never, ever be a camp there again.
I mean, you have some tax on property, right?
That's nothing.
Nothing, yeah.
No, if, if you, if that building was back to its former glory, it's a four hundred thousand dollar camp, like that.
Wow, wow.
It's a high property, it's full well-ceptive, I mean.
Yeah, if you could redo it. It was beautiful, it was a beautiful place, you know, I mean, just the entrance and the back.
That's the unique part of that property?
He has a height.
I don't think they would, uh, make that setback.
The demolition.
Where the property lines lay and the way the septic is.
Their erosion controls.
I think it was rebuilt in the same spot.
And it's that floating.
I don't think they'd make it go back.
And it's all federal.
Because of, of the, the, all of the.
The wall, the sewer, the way everything is already designed on the.
So everybody's.
I got HUD asking me to give them.
I mean, you might even have to move back five or six feet for contractors. If you was in the upstairs.
I'm not supposed to.
Not really your problem.
You could, you could hold your model.
I'm supposed to recommend.
On the window and drop it in the water.
Drop it in the water?
Yeah.
Pay the longer it takes them.
If I give you the inside.
Upstairs is out, eight, ten feet.
And was it a bank deed?
It was.
Or a repossessed?
No, they passed away and it went to probate and then there was a deed issue and then, so, when you research this deed. Um, HUD has gone to court two different times to get the deed clarified, um, but it's, it's clearly theirs, it's in their name.
Unbelievable.
So.
And it's fallen apart.
Yeah.
Falling down.
Yeah.
What a shame.
Empty buildings don't do well.
No.
It's just sad to think that if it's gone and the tax revenue for us is gone forever.
If you, it better.
I can't see it anymore.
Oh, that helps, I can't.
It'll look better from the water, for sure.
It does, oh yeah, it's, it's sad. You look from the water, you look at it.
Oh, it's warm.
Ugh.
I picked up the, the soffit. That was in the fall last year. Um, the other thing, the reason why I asked if Lance or Jerry could be here, Mike shared.
I shared it.
Okay, you did. So repeatedly, we're keeps finding these other towns that are getting themselves, for all the better words, in trouble. Um, so in light of that, I know we've talked many times about our permit process, about the permit and the lack of. Anything so that if you do go look at a tree or, or whatever, something in writing, not only that covers the town, but covers you, covers the town, covers the landowner. And there's actually a legitimate paper trail.
For?
Anything.
Wha- what Dale's referring to, just for, uh, and I sent you the article too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Talking like a permit book or something?
Yeah, something, something.
Stamp?
Anything.
The town of Alana showed up in a Vanguard Daily News article.
Oh, I didn't read that.
Fascinating, cause it's just.
And that's the chief skipper, that's what I believe is titled.
Where they are, it is titled.
And from what I read in the article, I did just kick that into a permit by rule and boom.
I think, I don't know if you noticed, the name, the attorney that was representing the, uh, her last name is Collins, she was our attorney for the solo ordinance.
Oh.
Um, but I, I, I think it's a process problem. They, they.
Somebody gets fooled.
Somebody gave permission that wasn't allowed to give permission. And, and the hand, the landowner went with it, and now there's, uh, there are people who want to undo it and it, they. They have a pretty good standing because the proper sequence wasn't followed, followed to begin with, or at least that's the way, um, and it doesn't. It looks like a pretty benign thing, it's just a gravel ramp into the river.
But it's up to a quarter million bucks?
The town right now is nearly a quarter million in legal fees, yeah. And it's turned into, somebody ran as a selectman with this kinda mission, he'd already written letters to the paper, he thought that this process was improper. He gets elected, now he's pushing to get this undone. They censure him for unethical behavior, it's just a total mess. And it all goes back to.
Censured him?
Yep. It all goes back, well, they, they cited him for unethical behavior because he believes it shouldn't be there, I guess, I, anyway. Uh, but it all goes back to improper permitting.
See, I kinda read that differently, and I'm gonna read it again. I read it, I read it as the permit was issued as it should be. Could, because it clearly said DEP approved, no issue, code enforcement doesn't have an issue, so everything was done properly, but. Whether it's this selectman or other selectmen that are involved, now they wanna be the ones that are pulling that permit.
Yeah, somebody tried it on one day.
Well, the, the landowner said, the landowner sued because he agreed to an improper permitting. So, I, 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 he's pushing the blame.
Somebody on the, on the appeals board was actually from out of state?
Yes.
Yep.
That was, that was another thing.
Not even a citizen.
Are you kidding?
Oh yeah, it gets, gets, keeps getting worse.
Yeah, it does keep getting worse. So, so a ruling took place that wasn't a legitimate ruling, which gives someone standing and it just spirals. All over a gravel ramp.
Right. The original agreement, the way I read it was, you know, this guy was gonna, will you guys put the road in if you want, the boat lane in, it was gonna be for. A few of the, it was for the people on the pond and a few recreational users. That was the original.
But it's private property.
It's private property. So that's how the permit was issued, and that's how it was all performed. And then now it kinda sounded like, now it's, uh, turned into main handic. So now, that's why the landowner, I think, is unraveled, because now it's not a occasionally used, sure, now it's everybody in a, they're just hammer.
Are using it.
Yeah. So, and then you've got this select person that's pushing, it's a mess.
Situation, being, being on his personal property.
Right, right.
But for me, it was one more. When I read it, yeah, I agree with everything, I mean, it's just a mess, but it also one more nail for, I think for us to. Doesn't matter what we do, we really, I think a paper trail's important.
I, that's, I guess that was the only reason I shared it.
The only thing I really don't have a paper trail for is just trees, tree permission.
Well, and I had a question about that because, you know, I, I had asked you when I saw that little clearing, you said, well, I gave her per- permission for two trees, let me know if there's more, right? How do we know what two trees, I mean, how, what system do you have?
The ordinance, they don't really need my permission to cut a tree. The ordinance clearly lays out in a twenty by fifty area, how to measure, measure trees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if you have this twenty, the score of twenty-four more inside this area, you can take down the trees.
Right.
I've got a step further, told people, just call me, I will show up.
Right.
It's a lot easier.
And I drive everywhere and I personally look at the tree and maybe have taken a little more control over it than, you know, they technically couldn't just go ahead and do it.
Okay.
But everybody's kinda, and everybody's got it now.
Then you get a call and someone says they did too much.
I go there, I see it, I see what's there, and then I go back by, I can, I can remember what was there and what was given permission to.
And he says no, by the way. He does his job good. He doesn't just let people.
No, no, I understand, no.
I just, I just, it, it, it's, it's a minefield, and if somebody rebuilt something that really shouldn't have been rebuilt there. And it quickly turns into a lot of money for the town, so.
What would we talk about?
I'm just.
In general.
Permitting in general, all of that.
And honestly, it was more, that's why I wanted Jerry here as well, um, because I really, the whole permitting application, we talked about that, about getting that revamped, something.
Yeah, we've got a really good rough draft set up. We've set a, a five hundred dollar fine, thirty day, thirty day notification, within thirty day notification. Changed a few, uh, verbiage, uh, some language a little more legal, you know, where you sign it, it says, I give, by signing this, I understand and have read, you know, blah, 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 just to give you a little more. A little more.
Is there any verbiage at the bottom of it that says this permit is not valid until approved by the planning board?
No, because we don't have planning board approval for building notifications. Planning board approval only for shoreland.
Right.
This is like, you wanna build.
Right, so, but, okay, but for a shoreland.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah.
Should be something verbiage because that situation we ran into, oh, I talked to George, I did the permit, I thought I had a permit.
Oh, yeah.
So, there again, before you're signing that.
I just, I just ran into one today in another town, oh, I said I was okay. Luckily, it was just, it was, wasn't shoreland, so.
Right.
But I'm just going around trying to get all this stuff in for tax purposes, everybody's taxes on, huh? I guess everybody's head, if you notify what you're doing, you pay your fair share, then maybe taxes won't go up.
Yeah, there you go.
That's really the.
That's what it is. I carry a stack of billing notices if I travel.
How, how, the other towns that you're, are we, how, where do we compare in terms of our process?
As far as.
As far as like, if you just wanna build a hunting camp, you don't have to do anything right now.
Take Parkman for instance, they have one permit for everything, it covers shoreline, all, if you wanna build a garage in the middle of your hundred acre field, you have a full permit, you have to fill out. And I authorize it.
Is it an application fee with it, or is that just?
Okay.
Okay, and if you don't do it.
An application fee, I mean, I don't wanna hinder anybody from, from building one else.
Hundred percent.
Which on another thing, with another thing, our floodplain permit has a thousand dollar fee.
Whoa. Oh, no.
Yeah, we need to change that.
Does, uh, does Parkman have a penalty if you don't?
No.
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 Okay.
But the penalty, it, you can make the penalty five thousand. If, if you're, if you're an honest person, it doesn't matter what, what, what the fee is.
Hundred percent.
Right.
The fee is only for people who don't intend. You know, and, and I get notified a lot, no, this person doing that, this person, I mean, it has to be a thousand dollar value, you get a lot of little handmade sheds and lean twos and.
Thousand dollars?
It doesn't take much to come up with a thousand dollars.
Nowadays.
But, you know, I'm not gonna call Hamlin in for a doghouse, you know?
Right. No, but I mean, if you don't have an application fee and you don't have any penalty for not applying, uh, it's, it's not dishonest to not do it, it's just, it's kind of just a request.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
There's no sense of urgency to it.
No.
It's a pretty close.
Yeah.
It's, oh yeah, I forgot, and I'll get around to it.
There's some new construction on Burrows Road, I'm just not sure where the line is there, but if you.
Oh, yeah, no, that's.
Is it down by the four wheeler trailer?
Yeah.
It, it actually cuts through the property, I think half of it, Sangarville half of it.
If you headed towards Route seven, it's on left hand side.
On Route seven?
If you're headed towards Route seven, it's on the left hand side.
That, Molly, I think you're probably talking about, um, Christina, they're from Southern Maine, they built three cabins in there and a giant septic for.
It's all permitted?
Yeah, we, we came through the planning board and everything.
And it's Sangarville?
Yep, yep, they're rentals. So, four wheels and some wheels.
Oh, wow.
Nice place, really nice.
They'll be busy.
The guy's a contractor himself, so they did a beautiful spot. We'll drive in circular, drive it, all the rocks he pulled out, he built the big sculptures, big community fire pit, it was nice. It's small, but they're nice.
Yeah, and he'll be filled.
He has two properties, that's what we figured out, if you, if you put three buildings on one septic, that's fine, if you go to four, then you become commercial. So if he wants to do more, he, he has a separate lot beside it, you can do it all over again, and stay out of the commercial area, the aspect of it.
No, that was honestly, that was my biggest thing, was just about that.
The burning?
Yes, cause I saw how much money that town is spending on legal right now, it's like, one more thing about everybody.
And it wasn't even a building, it was, it was nothing, it's just a gravel rea- and nothing.
Right.
It was just.
It's, it's a mountain out of the bowl.
It seems that way, except you push and he pushes and.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, there's no question, I mean, the guy ran because he wanted to get rid of it.
That's the problem and, and I think that's my biggest problem right now. Is I wanna think that I live in small town Sangar, Maine, and everybody's neighborly and everybody gets along and, you know, ev- everything is great.
I keep all these roads and try to, try to, in my memory, look what's there. You know, I've got one near your house that I was like, I don't remember that.
Yep.
When it went through the planning board, well, before me, but I'm still trying to figure it out.
But, you know, the reality is, that's, it's great to think that's how we live, but that's not really the, the way life is anymore.
No.
You know, when you take like that article, that town showing that kinda money, I mean, that could be any conversation we wanna talk about, as far as town stuff. If you're dealing with municipal and private people and different opinions and stuff.
We have people from large cities that.
Yep.
Well, when you're litigating against a government, whether it's a municipal government, state, but it's bottomless pit of money.
Right.
As far as the lawyers are concerned, because we just, we just have to raise the taxes and pay the bill.
Right.
Uh, if you're, if you're suing an individual, once they're broke, you, you can't get any money. But.
Sangarville's forever.
Sangarville's forever.
Biggest checkbook wins.
That's right.
Which, it's every citizen in that town, I mean.
Yep.
Hate to think with their miller going up because of all that.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, that would, that would hurt us.
Well, that's what I mean, can you imagine?
Parkman's is gone, their, their taxes gone, somebody are fifty percent.
Yeah, but I mean, if we had a quarter of a million dollar tax bill, we had to pay our lawyer fees, we had to.
Yeah, that's twenty-five percent increase right there.
Yeah, I mean, you run a business, you, the town is a business.
Yeah.
You run anything, you have the risk of.
Well, the thing is though, you, we're essentially immune from any of this if we just follow the rules.
Correct.
But everybody needs to know the rules, but.
That's the problem.
You really, as long as you're following the rules, there is a much taken suit for. We're not liable for injuries at the playground.
It's only, it's mostly shoreline stuff is where, you know, any of the permitting issues that come in, and I could, yeah, I'm constantly teaching people about things, you know? I think, you know, as far as shoreline, our permitting is, I don't see an issue. I don't think we're lacking in that area. Just the building notice one, it's just.
I don't have any.
People not turning it in.
Yeah.
And so.
I think putting teeth in that will.
So if we get, you know, we get this written up and when we go through town meetings, it'll be, when we go, what, next year?
No, we'll be having a special.
Special meeting.
If you can get it done, I would get it done.
Jerry has a rough draft, he's just, I mean, it could be typed up tomorrow, maybe I can fetch it from.
When's your next meeting, tomorrow night?
Uh, no.
Oh, next week, oh, second Thursday?
Second, the second Thursday.
On second Thursday.
Parkman's a person.
Okay.
So he kinda brought up a good point, not sure how you feel about this, but if Parkman is already has one form and it's for all buildings. Is there a reason why we wouldn't consider that same thing?
I, I, I would think it would be smart, unless somebody can poke some holes in the idea, I don't know why we wouldn't.
Because you, the, the one permit for all, the more thorough permit, gives you more information, what are you building, how big is it, you know, drawings, measurements. And then it has to be approved, the parkment, everyone I get, I, when I get it, I sit down, I research it, I get on Google, or I find it, I go look at it, you know? A little like.
It also takes out that, uh, verbal excuse, well, he told me I could.
That's what I like about.
Once we have the paperwork system.
I ran into that today.
Yeah, well, you're, and you're going to keep running into that, because, because we had this old.
Coming in, selling out of their permit.
Yep.
So, so the taxes.
If there's no such thing as he told me, then they can't use that excuse.
Right, well, right now, the way we have it set up, you know, oh, I can build it, and just, maybe I'll turn it in, maybe I won't.
So that doesn't work, that's not good.
They'll catch it.
That's not good.
No.
So.
That's why taxes are screwed up.
Yeah, so.
But we're doing a reset, we're paying a lot of money to do a full reval.
But even on, even honestly, even on my permitting that I've done, um, we made changes, I know you think, there was things that, like, Privyville didn't go in the right thing, and I called my plumbing inspector, or, I'm sorry, the plumbing person that drew up the plans for that, and she was well aware of the change that we made, um, and she, she was there on site, she, yep, she okayed everything, but there was nothing on my paperwork that showed, she didn't change anything on my permit, we didn't, we didn't relocate it over the.
Oh, on your, on your H H E two hundred?
Yeah.
She didn't change anything on that?
Nothing got changed there, same thing, we kinda, we went with a rock wall idea instead of the other, and, I mean, we did things, we followed.
Like in your case, rock walls for erosion don't require a permit.
Correct.
Rock walls for scenery require a permit.
Right, but that's, so even for me though, I guess, and I'm wearing every hat at the same time in this conversation, um, down the road per se, heaven forbid, something happens to you or to Jerry or whoever, and if somebody called D E P or whatever, and if they go into the town office and they pull up my file.
Doesn't match what you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're the one that would be in.
Right.
Although.
And or, at the same time, it would be, me as a citizen, I would be in the same vote in that article as the landowner.
I make notations sometimes, I'll, I'll, you know, type up something, I want to type it up, and I'll drop it in a file just for my future reference, or the guy next behind me, you know, going.
But you don't put it in the tax file.
I put it in the file, the C E O kept the file, I have all the files.
Oh, the C E O file, but not in the landowner, what, what?
So every permit, regardless of shoreland or just a building notice, all get scanned over to Hamlin's.
Okay, okay.
Right, but what I'm saying though, so like, when we did my project, for instance, um.
The changes.
The changes, not really, you know, so the Privyville, we moved a little bit, we added the wall, um, like you said, it wasn't decorative, it was for purpose.
For erosion.
Sure, it's for erosion, so it was all proper, it's not that it wasn't, but none of that type, that's what I'm trying to say is, I.
That detail wasn't there.
Yeah.
If it's needed, I'll make a note and I'll drop it in the file.
But that's, that's kinda.
If I'm in a hurry, you know what I mean, going, hey, I stopped by, we talked about this, that.
Yeah, any note is better than any.
It gives you some, gives you some places to start.
Well, I'm just back to this, all, that, for instance, you know what I mean? That's what I'm, not trying to be a pain in the butt either, about, I don't wanna get overboard in paperwork, but at the end of the day, ten years later, people that were involved aren't around anymore, you know what I mean? That's where another way.
You're back, you're back to the tree permit, but.
Yeah, all of it, yeah, I mean.
Just documentation.
Yeah, just regular documentation, that this is, yep, changes were made, you know, maybe it's no more than, you know, when we create our permits, is there a spot on the back lined out for notes for changes, or, so when somebody, you know, like for mine, for instance, yeah, these are the changes that we made, you quit notes, write all on the same permit, don't have to create a new permit.
I had a permit, I went in the parkment today, I had pulled the permit out, it was from twenty twenty before me, and I investigated, and I came back and wrote on that permit before I refilled it, I inspected this property, you know, Lance Shum, the C E O, seven, seven.
Perfect.
I wrote it on the bottom of the box, stuck it back.
Yep.
So if he has, if you get hit by a bus next year, God forbid, and he has a problem, someone's gonna look at that and he's gonna be okay.
Yep.
Right, right.
That's what you're getting.
Yeah, that's all.
Anything I think requires it, I do.
Right, but that's, that's kinda where I'm.
Yeah, I researched like the tree permit thing, I researched that there is, that's something we'd have to custom make, you know, I'm sure maybe Vista Break can whip up something, or, you know, you know, just a simple little thing, but once we get our building permit notification changed, you know, I'd say we'd go with it that way, and, cuz really, the shoreline permit is fairly involved, and it's not really necessary in a, in a rural, non-shoreland setting, you know?
Right.
Because we really don't have a land use warrant.
Correct.
You know, it's your land to do as you want, build as you want, whether you're legal. It's all for tax purposes, it's the notification, we wouldn't be in this tax, that's for example.
Well, like I said, we're about to be updated, we'll find out how much was missing.
Did we do, I thought we did a partial, we didn't do measurements.
No.
No, no, they just did a.
We just going across.
It's costing us.
We did a thirty-something.
Yeah.
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah, it was just a bump, everybody got.
Parkman did the same shit, too.
I looked at a piece of property on Monson Pond, it was listed, and went down to the shoreline, and like every third tree, the owner had girdled them.
Oh.
Have you run into that yet?
The old, are they old, old metal girdles?
No, he just took a chainsaw and went all the way around, bought all of them.
I haven't seen that yet, but.
Every year, a third of these, every two years, a third of these trees is high.
Most of my trees are legit, I mean, you know, it's dead, dying, or hazard.
Well, these will be dying eventually.
You know, and, and sometimes I'll, you know, I, I died some, it was definitely dead, but there was really no need for it, it was right smack off the wall, and the roots were in the water, and it wasn't gonna hit any, but we carried the one by the camp, so we'll revisit that one, we'll leave it for now.
I'm sure the tree thing is a pain, particularly around the water.
That's what we did at my place, cuz everything else we were doing, I had one that was dying.
I believe most of my tree balls are on the other road somewhere.
Cuz they know.
I wonder why.
Well, that's, we're about to change the name of that road.
Is it town or the private?
I'm kidding, we're not gonna change the name of it.
The private one is, every, every camp road has its own personality.
Yes, own vibe, you are absolutely right.
Our road, anybody that stops and talks to me and asks questions about what you're supposed to do, I refer every one of them, just give Lance a call, have him come out and look, and you go from there.
I run, if I'm not doing anything, I'll drop everything around, I'd rather people call me and ask than destroy it.
That's what I've explained to them, it's much easier to make a phone call, have a direction, than do what you think you wanna do, and deal with it afterwards.
Later.
Correct, so.
Uh, before you go, we, last time, we, you had some properties that you were about to take action on, do you have any update there, or? Have you sought legal or anything like that?
I have no luck on the lawyer aspect of it, it seems, most towns that have their own police department, it's taken care of by the police.
Okay.
And Code of Law's guys don't seem to deal with the lawyer, I asked the lawyer to, you know, reach out.
We can check.
Reach out to some town managers, maybe they got some more information.
I'll check back with the gal who did our.
Yeah, they need to shoot me a lawyer's talk.
They've got a huge team, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna go before we actually hire somebody, I'm gonna do one more revisit.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
If you could just send me kind of an overview of what you're looking to do, I'll reach out to her.
Okay.
And see if there's a fit there, okay?
Yep.
All right, hopefully you don't need it.
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Uh, Fire Chief showed up while we were all chatting, so we can go over to, uh, item six, Fire Department. Thanks for coming.
Those are a couple things that we wanted to talk about with you guys, um, first thing, you wanted to start off Chad, or you want me to?
Well, I don't know, I'd like to start right off with the toll road, cuz I think that's gonna be the, the monkey in the room, right? That's what everybody's been mentioning, so, let's, let's go down that path for, get that, pull the spinner out right now.
Is that the boot drive?
The boot drive.
Oh, okay.
Toe, toe road?
Toll road.
Oh, toll road, okay, good.
Call it toll road.
Okay, so, okay, okay.
So, we'll, we'll start right off by first saying that the two of us had nothing to do with establishing the Friends of the Sangerville Fire Department. We want that.
That was clear before all of you.
Yep, yep.
Full agree.
And, just like you and I talked the other day, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, we don't know the rules, and realistically, we wanna more than likely probably move away from it, so that we're not causing hate and discontent. The big thing is, is how do we, how do we move forward as a team, not, I was gonna say, when you're being sales, with the money that we've already raised? And what can we do with it going forward, and we all know that the law is a big part of it, we wanna do that, right? That's one of the first things we wanna do, and.
Honestly, you and I have talked about that, but I, I didn't wanna misspeak for you in any way, so after you and I talked, I just told the group that you and I had a conversation, you had some concerns you wanted to bring to the board, and that you was gonna come in and express and tell us about it.
Yeah, well, we.
So I haven't, they don't know about this, what this is.
So, every department, I'm sure you guys all heard of cancer, right, it comes from, you know.
Oh, yep, yeah.
And every department in the, well, in the country eventually, is gonna be mandated to have a clean room, where you guys can come in here and not be exposed to anything out there, to make a clean room, we think we can do it reasonably cheap, but we gotta basically take those out, frame it in, and put a man door right there, and then, it hasn't become mandatory yet, but it's got, and I think it's best for everybody's health as well, right, I mean, it's the, it's the right thing to do.
So, just so everybody knows, all you're really talking about doing is taking the, the meeting room and enclosing where the movable curtains are.
Yes.
It's two.
Two eight foot openings?
Eight, eight by ten openings, maybe?
Just frame some, two by fours, sheet rock.
Take the trim down, sheet rock, yep.
Yeah, and then do the same on that side, except for framing a man door.
Yep, something through.
Which we already have a door that was like dirt cheap, you know, because obviously, less cost, better, but, um, and I think we can get out of it relatively easy, uh, make ourselves a clean area here where everybody can be away from the gear, the trucks, the exhaust, all that, um, and there was, I was reached out to from Maine Highlands Federal Credit Union, they this year started a grant for first responders, so they asked if I was willing to write to them for a grant, I wrote to them saying, this is what we're considering doing, uh, we'd love to get your support, we think we can cover it for fifteen hundred dollars, they went to their board, and that's a check, um, they approved it.
Right, right.
Um, so that's what they would do towards it, um, and.
And there's a letter that goes with it, and the, the big thing about this is, is that.
Could you read the letter, please?
Sure.
Because not to be.
Yes.
How that, what that actually says is gonna determine the rest of the conversation. The wording of that is important.
Dear Assistant Chief Blocker, thank you for submitting your first responder donation request to Maine Highlands Federal Credit Union. The Board of Direct, the Board of Directors reviews all requests, although we cannot fully fund the project at this time, we hope that this donation will help move your fundraising effort forward for the eventual completion of a new clean room for your station. This is our first year with this first responder initiative, but we hope to continue it for years to come. Please do not hesitate to apply again, or get, apply again in the future, we appreciate all you and your team do to help keep our community safe. Sincerely, Maria Wooden, President and CEO. But, the big part about bringing this was, uh, again, we don't really know how Friends of and, and what we've already raised and what we haven't raised, we don't know how that mixes together, and we don't wanna, we're not interested in everybody being centered, right, keeping secrets and doing all that crap, it's just, it's anti-productive, but it's just not gonna work.
We've done some research since the conversation came up, I did a little bit online, but like I said, it's, it's Google information, so I don't know what is correct and what isn't. I don't know what part of the Friends of nonprofit is, like, the two of us are not, we don't know enough about it, so as far as we know, you know, we've just been fundraising off from what the guys that started this.
Right, what we've done with the bats.
How they went about it, um, you know, and we learned the law from that, um, and, you know, we just kinda wanna start over and see where we gotta go from here.
But this most recent toll road, that, that was the Fire Department?
Well, so, so, yeah, so it was poorly misrepresented, just like Dale and I talked, the way it's always been is, is that's been the Friends of the Sangerville Fire Department. I don't think I ever cleared that with that, honestly, I never did.
But the other, so the other thing for me, right there, and you and I've talked about this, um, we say that, but at the same token, Sangerville Fire Truck's sitting out there, you know what I mean, it's.
That's one thing that we never thought through, the reason the fire trucks have always been there is for lights, that people don't get hit, just for safety.
Sure.
We never thought, hey, that's a Sangerville Fire Truck, but it's not really for.
And the truth of it, the truth of it is.
Really overlooked.
The truth of it is, it's money for the fire department, right, it's money for us to go back into it, we don't, uh, that, that game of this is ours and that is yours, it's just, it's just too ugly, it's too ugly.
And I totally agree with you, um, and, and people, the way it was promoted was promoted as Fire Department, and I'm sure certain that even if it had been promoted technically as Friends of, everybody who put money in the boot, thought they were giving it to the Fire Department, and always has.
Well, that's the thing, and it was just a, an error on our part of just not knowing better.
So, it was the Fire Department, let's just say it was, okay? Where's the money?
The money's in a Friends of account up in, uh.
That's, you see where that's.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Oh, yeah, that's.
So that money, how much money was it?
So that was just over sixty-one hundred dollars.
Okay, that money, that money belongs to the town.
Yes, right.
So that needs, I think, personally, my belief is, first thing, that's gonna get to Lorna, that goes in an account, and there'll be accounting of it.
Right.
Great, and it matches the way the event was promoted, it was promoted as the Fire Department, we used town equipment to do this. People can debate whether we should or shouldn't do it, but that's what we did.
That's what we did.
So that money gets back where it's supposed to be.
And I'm perfectly good with that.
This project, I think you guys got it in your budget already, I mean.
It's, it's really long, yes.
I mean, I wanna, I'd like to put that eight hundred dollars to it.
So, this. Well, we've got a town meeting coming up, is gonna solve that.
Yes, the, so, from what we've all understood, technically, and this is where this gets sketchy, and this is where a lot of people don't fully understand. Everybody wants to think that a Fire Department's volunteer, well, we're, we're not a volunteer.
Right.
We are municipal volunteer, we are paid, it's minimal.
Yeah.
But at the same token, it has to function as, similar to any other department within a town. So, as far as like that check or, or the sixty-one hundred dollars, technically, the only ones that can receive that is the select one. So that would come to us, um, I think that's a little different, because that is kinda earmarked for a project.
Well, it was specifically said that.
Sir, so that one there, that's no different than, it was too bad the credit union donated funds towards Pirate Rec for specific, so that one, that's why that was actually on the warrant and had to get approved by the town.
It's not a, it, there's plenty of, it, it has its perp, I mean, it works, it's just delayed a few months, that's all.
It's a process.
Yeah.
It's, it's an accounting process.
That's the reason why I called you, cuz, you know, we got guys that are all ready to go to work on this, and they call me, say, hey, can we start? That's, no, we can't start, not, we can't go.
This is within your budget anyway.
Right, I understand that, but I still.
No, we wanna do it. Well, no, and I appreciate that, and really, I appreciate the whole, what you're trying to get this, because as you and I talk, I, I mean Dover just did it, Newport does it. Um, I think it's clunky.
I'm in the fire this year.
Yeah, um, and really, my other big thing is, I know why you did it, I mean, that's, that's a hell of a lot of money that got donated to the town, but, you know, as you and I talk, I just pity that poor guy that's been on the road, sets New Hampshire, driving up through, and he's already hit three towns.
Oh.
Having to stall, and he's got them screaming kids in the back, that, are we there yet, and it's just.
I, I, I get that, and I mean.
No, I know, but.
But I mean, it's a huge fundraiser, and, and so, uh, let's, before we get affixed on the sixty-one hundred dollars, let's just say, right now, that was a record breaking year. It is typically anywhere from forty-five hundred to fifty-five hundred.
Even that, that's a good year, I mean, that's decent money.
It's a turn up year, it's.
It's whatever.
It's whatever we need to.
Yeah, sure, so, I mean, my own thought, and I think it's, you guys' opinion, if that gets, you bring it to us, we approve it, it goes into the bucket, and then that literally, in order to give that back, we have to put that on a line item at the actual town meeting.
No, that, that'll just, that's town funds now, it's town funds.
Correct, but it's not budgeted for them to spend.
When we get to next year's budget cycle, we've got a six thousand dollar help.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's how that would work.
We don't need approval to do that, I don't believe, because it's, it's donated to the town.
Correct, but that gets approved through, that's for him to spend that money out of the boot drive.
It'll be all part of the next year's budget.
That's what I'm saying, it'll be on.
Well, I guess, we don't need the town's approval to do that.
Well, the town approves the town budget.
Well, yeah, it'll be the whole budget, but, but that specific six grand, that's town money already.
Correct.
So that's all.
But it's, but that's part of the.
Whereas this donation is for this particular project, that we do have to put on as an individual item.
But what I'm saying is, sixty-one hundred dollars that they just raised and donated, you can't spend that next week.
No.
Has to fall through the budgetary cycle and get approved through the town warrant, so they're almost gonna be, you can't really predict it, you'd be like a year behind getting that money.
Every time.
Yeah, yeah.
Is how that would be.
That's totally correct.
But is that something that, if we, you know, talk, come budget time, is that something that we can roll when the next year's budget for something for the Fire Department, or is that something that we gotta, we basically gotta go all in to the general fund, then we gotta ask when it's budget time, hey, remember that six thousand? Can we try to, like, we talked about a gear washer to try to get some of the stuff off the gear as well, which is, I've got a cool gear, but that's five thousand, two hundred dollars. You know, so that's kinda what we're thinking, you know, eventually, if we spent that money on something, that might be something that we'd consider buying.
Right.
But how's that process gonna work?
So, I'll, I'll ask that question a little bit differently, but the same idea, if, in my city, it's fifty-five thousand for an average number, if our average budget every year is fifty-five thousand, and we raised six thousand, does that mean next year, we still get fifty-five thousand, but forty-nine from the town and six from the boot drive? Or do we, can we go sixty-one thousand instead of the fifty-five thousand, I guess that's where my question comes.
Yeah, I, 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 my, you basically, you're, you're, you address your budget on an annual basis, there's no way to know, I mean, the, our increases for this year are on the bottom of the page, cuz the tax bills went out, it's unbelievable what's happening to your tax bills, uh, so we don't know what the landscape's gonna look like, it might be the six grand that you've collected allows us to do exactly what we did this year, otherwise we wouldn't be able to, is what I'm saying.
How's that work with the mill rate, if, just say you were at a, the tipping point for your mill rate, right, and you wanted to add the six thousand dollars, right now, you're not gonna, but if you add six thousand to it, you're gonna, the six thousand dollars is money we raised, is that gonna tip?
For Sangerville, the way to look at it is, one mill is approximately seventy-five thousand dollars, okay, so if, if, if we wanted to, well, the fire, the budget for the Fire Department last year, you originally requested, I think, seventy-five thousand, and we worked back and forth, yeah, so that was a mill.
One mill.
So one mill on your tax bill.
So you could kind of, the ratio, half of that, if we go up fifty percent, that's a half a mill, that's kind of the way, okay? And that's kinda, it's, that's kind of the struggle for Sangerville, because in Dover-Fosstraw, one mill might be two hundred and fifty grand, so all of a sudden, you know, building a couple walls is nothing, but, well, we were talking about legal fees, a little town gets hit with a hundred thousand dollar legal bill, if you're Herman, you don't even notice it, if you're Sangerville, you get crushed, so that's, I think, the money that you guys raised is incredible, actually, that you were able to do that, uh, and I think it's gonna be a huge help, but it's just a process.
There's two ways to look at it, when you submit your budget next year, you can submit your increase, and then when it goes to town conversation or through the budget process, it gets ironed in or out, the other thing that could, if, through the budget process, it could be determined if it was to separate it out of the line. So you can either leave it in as part of your whole budget, and possibly knock it down through the process, or you could try to suggest doing it, no different, I see it kinda no different than as you and I talked before, that, hey, this is your budget, if you guys come in a couple thousand dollars extra, that years pass, we used to take that money we used to take that money and roll that money back into one of your reserve accounts.
Yep.
So you had the same idea, so, I kinda think that the donation is a similar.
The equipment that Jody was able to get through that work, I mean, that was a lot of value, and what, we're not gonna sit here next year and say, hey, it's free, the fire department is, yeah, we're not gonna do that.
No, no.
But it's a huge help, so maybe we don't have to spend that extra five, maybe we can do your project because of what Jody was able to bring to the table, well, this money would be exactly the same as that.
And that's kinda what I'm trying to, to figure out is, if, if it's gonna benefit the fire department, then people will be, people here, you know, will keep, continue to do it, even if it rolls into the general fund. But if, like, for some reason, we can't get any of that back come budget time next year, they're gonna, it's gonna be hard to try to get people to do it, and then potentially.
Boot drive is out of the.
Right, then potentially that six thousand dollars that won't go back into fund, because nobody's gonna do it. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
I, I think, I think you have no choice but to, at this point right now, see what happens with this year's budget.
Yeah, I, I, again, I would use that analogy of the equipment, um, i- 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 if, if we took that gift that Jody was able to get, and use that as an argument to gut your budget next year, well, there would be no point in going out and trying to do these things, so, I mean, we're not looking to tear it down.
That's what, that's all I'm getting at in a way, is.
But we also don't wanna go to a twenty-three mill rate, so, I don't think, we can't pre-negotiate a budget.
Have you seen your tax bill yet?
Do I want to?
No, you don't. So this year, we went from fifteen-nine-four, which last year was.
Mill rate.
Mill rate, this year is eighteen-one-four-five.
Good job. What, so what's, and this.
School and county.
Is that, but is Robinson's going away?
Well, he's still paying property tax.
He's still paying property tax.
All on that.
County was eleven percent.
It's right on the ball.
And they were eleven last year.
You're going bold and left.
School was thirteen.
Right.
And the town, the rate, the municipal budget, which obviously you guys are part of, we were up six, which is, you know, we were talking, that's basically inflation.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's a pretty good hit.
You guys had a little up, we had a little up everywhere.
Well, everything's going up, so you gotta expect.
You gotta.
Electric's up, heat's up, fuel's up, everything's up.
And to me, there's a, there's a thing going on right now, where if you were over sixty-five, you got to lock in your taxes this year. It's, the legislate, it was an election year, they passed this thing, it's going away. The, the reason that matters, if we've got a hundred and fifty-eight residents, they're not seeing this increase, because they're locked in from last year, so, but next year, when we do another budget, there's a hundred and, nearly a hundred and sixty resi, they're gonna probably see a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in their tax bill. And you guys know, we try to run this thing tight as we can.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
It's brutal.
That's kinda the, and I, and I know what you're saying, Matt, and I'm, but I kinda, everybody needs to understand that, we want the best for the department as you guys do.
Right.
But at the same token, you just, you're seeing the numbers that we're seeing, and the reality of the whole picture of what's coming.
I understand what you guys are saying, I'm sure.
So if, even if you, let's say this goes to town budget, and I'm not saying this is what I want to happen, but, let's say this goes to town budget, and the town decides, hey, with the mill rate we just had, geez, thanks guys, but we can't give it back to you this year. But, at the same token, for me, that's also, that's six thousand dollars, it's helping keep your budget where you're at.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Oh, I understand that.
Because that's really, we can't take this too mu- too much more, and even everything is gonna have to get looked at tighter, and how do we trim, and where do we go next? Because it's kinda sad, like you was just saying, it's sad to think about those hundred and fifty-eight seniors a year from now, when they see the reality of a two-year tax increase all at once.
So my next question is to ask you guys, what your suggestion is going forward with this whole thing? How do we do it? Do we, do it as Sangreal Fire Department?
Well, I have some concerns about liability, this, we were talking about liability with planning board and, and appeals board, and how towns can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees just because somebody did something wrong. If, I know we're protected if one of our guys gets hurt responding to a call, I know we're protected. But if we do something elective, and we're not responding to anything, and, in fact, maybe we backed up traffic for a fundraising purpose, and an accident is caused, is there an avenue for the, for the town to be sued because we created this condition? If one of our guys gets hurt, certainly as, as friends of, he's not covered.
Right, right.
So, should, but he's standing by our fire truck. If, all of these things get complicated.
That's why we're asking you guys, because we don't know.
But we don't know either.
We don't know either, but, but we need to.
But we can find out, that's what we need to find out, what is the best way?
I think the best thing is to, is to find out.
I mean, I know that, and it just doesn't, I'm going to, it's almost like I get that, but, there's probably thirty other, or probably not more. You know, they do it in the middle of Bangor, in the middle of Portland.
They do it.
So there's, there's gotta be, I would think that there has to be something.
So I do know, I, I'm very certain Bangor got in trouble, because they were doing it as the fire department, and it wasn't being through the budgetary, so now you'll see those guys are no longer in gear, um, they're no longer in intersections, as far as in the road, they're at the intersection, but they're on the sides of the roads now.
I had to borrow one in Bangor.
So, I can't see, I can't see a scenario where an independent group is able, well, first of all, is able to stop traffic, or use municipal property in that process, so, it would be like Pirate Rec saying, hey, we're gonna borrow your fire truck for the day and block traffic, we wouldn't.
No, I, I think, I think it has to be done as a Sangreal Fire.
If you're gonna do it at all, I agree with you, I can't see any other way.
And that's what we're trying to figure out, is how we go from here, so that we're doing it the right way.
We'll make some calls about the legal aspect.
Obviously, for years, we, we didn't have a clue, when, until the, the subject came up, I was like, Chad and I both kinda looked at each other and we're like.
I get it.
No, I, and we don't know either, that's, but I really liked that you guys came and were all talking about this, and trying to make sure we're all on the right, both sides of this, so there's no liability for either.
Well, that's why, we don't, we don't wanna hide that, and some of the old, kind of like thing, like, you know, it's ours.
I know, so they were asking, just, they would say.
But, we just need to figure out how to go about it.
I just have a question, as far as the, uh, friends of, is that a, a, a legit five, three, whatever the.
Five oh, two oh, six, five oh one C.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it is, but I, all we know is back years ago, like this town, there was lawyers involved, but we don't know.
I've stripped this whole fire department, trying to.
Well, I can, a good suggestion is, especially if you have an account at the credit union, ask them.
Oh, they probably have the paperwork, they would have the paperwork.
Because if you are a legitimate nonprofit, they would know your number.
Yeah, and they'll have all the original paperwork, they will have it all.
But I think, I, I, man, I was talking, we were talking about this the other day, you know, you can vary of liability. We're in the middle of something, we don't even know, it's kinda like being in the middle of a drug deal and not having any idea there's drugs up there.
Right.
Correct.
We don't know what we're doing.
Correct, and that's how towns get in trouble.
So I'm not far from going up there immediately and saying, please take my name off that account altogether.
Well, so that's, so, just a quick question, when your name got put on there, did you just go up and put your name on it?
Yeah, well, I went through, and you go.
We didn't know anything about.
And there may be. No, because if you are a legitimate non-profit, there is a process for you to get your name put on there.
There was a bunch of big words we had to fill out at the credit union, I think I signed five times, but I don't know if that had anything to do with, I don't.
But they would know, Chad, seriously, they would, they would know for sure.
They'll have all the original paperwork, because I just went through this.
It's about tax agency, the federal government doesn't let them set them up for no reason.
Sangreal newspaper.
Well, and that's really, that's what we try to do the most of, is, how do we do whatever, and ask, all the questions we need to ask is to keep liability down.
As far as we've ever known, is we just kinda came onto the department and assumed that it was done correctly?
Sure, I, and I don't blame you.
Because none of us are, you know.
And the, the other side of it is, is from the morality point of view, right? Get away from the legal point, but, and you've made this statement, I don't know how many times, it drives me absolutely crazy, is, you guys stand on the side of the road and collect your money to buy beer, that kills me. I want people to know and be able to see somewhere that it's go, him and I are putting it back in here.
The, the majority of people that are putting money in that boot believe it's going to the fire department.
Right.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And not just, uh, an afternoon out.
And it needs to go to the fire.
Correct.
Not door knife.
And if we don't have liability, it's probably gonna be because it's not a friends of, and I don't see how you do a nonprofit entity in using town equipment, I don't see how, I don't see how you can do that.
I completely understand that, so if we end up doing it as the town, that's one thing, if we end up doing it the other way, then no town drive, none of that.
Correct.
And that's, you know, now that we know that.
And that might be, there's a legitimate reason for that, I mean, you could set up a ball, I mean.
Yeah, have a booth and collect money.
Right.
But.
Do a car wash, I mean, but.
I think my, my kid said to me at one point, you know, it would be like the historical society, coming in, in the middle of town, stopping traffic to collect money, I mean.
And saying it was for the town.
Right.
And the reason that it's always been done for so long by so many departments is because it is.
A money thing.
You don't have to do anything but stand there and six thousand.
And to be honest with you, if, if we were to do it the way you said, set up in a ball field, as the friends of, completely separate from the town, him and I need to get with a lawyer and accounting and somebody to explain all these rules to us, because.
Correct.
Here we are now, we're saying, okay, so this year, we wanted to raise money for that wall, right? And we've estimated, just from doing rough numbers, it's gonna be between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars to do that project. But we raised six thousand, so if we specifically said, we talked about this, if we specifically said this money's going towards the wall, what are we doing the other?
Yeah, there you go.
Can we do that some money?
Well, that's another thing.
We don't.
I, I looked it up, and there's like dedicated donations underdicated, so.
That's what I was saying about the wording of that letter makes a difference.
Exactly, a lot of that falls under dedicated, and some of it doesn't, so, it works well, we just didn't know any of it until now. And that's why it's like, alright, so let's just talk to some people.
That's why I stopped everything a month ago, just, every stop, I called down, and that's, that's why we're here today, is we don't.
But I mean, as far as your, your budget you have today, you have some money in there for building.
Yeah.
I mean, you have your budget period, you can do that, you're just, you gotta be careful until we can get something approved.
The thing is, is I think other things are eaten up a little bit more, so we're worried that we might have to steal from Peter to pay Paul.
Correct, because at the end of the day, what really matters for you is the big number at the ball field.
I would just say, you submit us, I, I, you know, kind of a light item thing, but the truth is, and we do this with every department, you've got that bucket of money, we, we just don't wanna go over that amount.
And that's what we're trying.
And we're trying.
A structural change like this, yeah, you should run it by us, but we're never gonna, I can't imagine we're gonna argue with you, I mean, so, yeah.
No, but if you came in here next week to your meeting, and this was all.
No, I think you also. Say, hey, this is what we're gonna do, it's not.
And you want it on, you want it on the record, that.
Yeah, you want the beat, you know, the guys, it's good for you, too.
Then nobody's calling Dale up saying, hey, those guys tore up, did you know, like, yeah, no, we know about it.
I just don't want ten guys in twenty years to have cancer, cross state.
No.
Absolutely.
Nobody's arguing with that. Let's do it, yeah, I mean.
And for a grant?
Yeah.
I'm wondering about, this, gotta be thinking about the door you, he mentioned, there's some pretty nice doors in that building next door, that probably are never gonna get used, probably gonna get.
Yeah.
You don't wanna start pulling stuff out of there yet? Okay.
I, I have a door out there right now, that, you know.
Because we talked about pulling the heat pump out of there.
It's got a, it's got a window, it's an exterior metal door.
Yeah, this floor dried out, nice width. So we're gonna, we're gonna get some numbers.
Well, that was the only thing that I, when Chad and I talked, is where it is in the interior door, you just gotta make sure it's compliant, so you've got the.
Well, if, if you, at least treat this room.
Oh, yeah, that, for this room, that'd be perfect, and that would probably catch your energy bill down.
And this is going, he's gonna get a letter from Coca-Cola saying, it's ours.
Yeah.
And we'll get it out of here, so, we'll leave it, sell it on Facebook or take it to the dump.
Yeah, I told Chad, though, talking to him, they basically said, we're not coming to get it, but, I think what you said, maybe I can get the information, have Lorna send us.
Send him an email.
And if they respond, we're not coming to get it, then we'll get.
And it's ours, they imagine it.
I, I just have a question, with regard to this check, um, so, we're going to, we're planning on a special this summer, so we can put this on our special this summer, and, um, accept the check.
Correct.
And, and, and then the town votes, whether it's, that it, that it's earmarked, and votes to then designate it for this year.
To the year budget, so that would be used.
Correct.
Yeah.
So if we were to start the project earlier with the funds in the rent out budget, when, when this is voted on, would it?
That's how, that's how, honestly, that's how we would.
That's how we would get that money.
So that money would fall right back into your account.
Right.
We just wear it's nice weather, we wanna get done for it.
Yeah, and it's, you've got the money, I'd do it.
Right.
And if, if we get lucky on this heat pump, it could be comfortable in here by the end of August, you know?
Which would be great.
Yeah.
Because there's two heat pumps over there. Right, yes, over in that, well, library and the.
I don't know, I'll probably have them sitting in the.
No.
That's correct.
They need help with many.
It's just about what they're worth after you move them, it's not a big.
Yeah, with the wall done, then you could really do that.
Yeah.
Sort of horn it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate you guys coming in.
What, what else do we have on the donkey, anything, for the fire, fires fire department?
Uh, one thing for you, though, we talked about something else.
Do we need to go into executive sessions and talk about that, with all the names thrown around, or?
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
Dover's ordinance in the building.
Oh, that, yeah, I haven't got any of those.
Okay, no, that's all I.
They haven't told you whether our citizens will be charged or not?
Nope, no, I don't believe that they're going to be, but I have to get verification from the line, I'd say.
She's going to a town meeting tomorrow, a manager's meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, I found that out after I talked to you, that she's got a manager's meeting with them.
She's got a few questions about.
Gonna put it on the agenda.
The way I read it, sounds like it is.
So, so a little, a little bit of backstory to that, this all started with Sebeck. Sebeck had a full-time, not full-time, but a complete volunteer, one hundred percent volunteer fire department. And the town would give them money every year, and they raised money, but they were a separate entity from the town. And what happened was, they pretty much lost all their guys, they had trucks sitting there, and basically what they started doing was just calling Dover for mutual aid for everything.
Right.
And Dover figured out the money, and it was, they were at fifteen, they were at fifteen, twenty thousand dollars worth of costs they'd done in the town Sebeck, and there was nothing, there was no literature anywhere for them to go after the town and say, hey, you guys owe us this money, we can cover it. That, and that's where I think all this literature should read and stems from, and there was a huge, huge fight, and, uh, Sebeck ended up becoming a municipal fire, this just happened six months ago.
Switching over.
Sebeck ended up becoming a municipal fire department.
Yeah, in April, they voted on, so it was recent.
To help settle waters with that.
So, they, they have access to mutual aid by doing that?
They, they took the mutual aid and, and played it in their favor.
Right.
I mean, I, I know they were telling us one day that they got called to a mutual aid car accident, it was just a little rollover, it was nothing, and when they drove by, the acting fire chief was more of a.
So that's the thing is, and the way.
How do you, how do you justify?
That mutual aid agreement is only, is only good if both parties contribute, so Sebeck wasn't contributing their half, so, and mutual aid is free if you contribute when they call to, but it's.
But there's no policing mechanism, there's no, nobody's signed any contracts saying, we're gonna do this, or we're gonna, it's just a handshake.
Very, very.
It's an honor system, that you're.
We'll have our own.
Right.
It's no different than.
Right, cause like as we've talked, though, as far as the select board, we've never even, we've never seen that mutual aid.
Yeah, it, it's another example of an agreement that commits the town to financial liability and expenditure.
Have they made up a new one yet?
It will be ready for the August meeting.
So, and, and we talked, I think, quite a few months ago, that we weren't signing nothing, so you guys looked at.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
We've been in a meeting, we've been in multiple meetings trying to reword it a lot because of what happened between going, all solid chiefs in the county are writing it up. So, we'll bring it to you and lay it on the table, have you guys look over it.
I really think that all the select, in every town should be, I mean, you would think that would have to be approved at the time of.
I think a lot of it goes to the town manager, people think it's the town manager, town manager.
It's never gone to the town manager.
But, um, I think that's what Dover.
This is the first time since nineteen ninety-two they've rewritten?
Really?
It's been.
Sure, but it has to be, you can't contractually multi-year a town to anything, because you do the budget here.
Right.
You know what I mean? So whether or not they've rewritten it or anything, is really, that should be an annual agreement.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, this is something that we talked about earlier on this year. Every, once I get it rewritten, we'll bring it in.
Yeah.
Because I do, I do favor, I do think it's something that needs to happen in the county.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you.
Unfortunately, the one fire department can't do it, it just can't, it takes, you know, what have we got, five, six, eight sometimes to fight?
Yeah, we'd, we'd never, we'd never be able to fight. I was trying, I mean, it would be as simple as saying, going forward, we're gonna show up and make sure that the grass doesn't burn to the road. But everybody else is just gonna burn flat. You're almost offering inadequate protection, really, really, uh.
But honestly, not that I wanted that, but the way things have changed over the years with, with insurance companies. Once life safety's out of that house, and even though you've knocked that down and that's smoke damage and water damage.
Usually, most of the time, it's a full loss.
It's a full loss, you know, so.
Yeah, with that little white kookie, I mean, he caught his basement on fire. We went in and put that hope, and it was minimal burn damage.
Yep.
He was at his house for like six months.
Yep.
Before he was allowed to go back.
Right.
And with the cancer part of it, you know, they make you do massive, massive cleanings, so twenty one years.
So that's kinda, you know what I mean? I understand what you're saying as far as, we don't, wouldn't have enough people to fight the fire anyway, but at the end of the day, the point of fighting the fire isn't the same today as it was twenty years ago, because at the end of the day, it's gone anyway.
Majority of it now is the life.
But it's the, it's the.
Hundred percent.
It's the life safety.
Yep.
It's the life safety.
Yeah, it's the first five minutes, I mean.
You just never know.
Yep.
And if you, you know, don't do the, the full response and somebody dies, then you got a big issue.
Yep.
And, and we're dedicated to, uh, you know, I'm a big, big pusher on, if you don't need to be in that building, don't be in it.
Correct.
We're not, we don't, we don't do. We're very fortunate here in Sangerville. You do see some dumb things another time?
Mm-hmm.
One, one of the things that, that puzzles me about mutual aid is because I, we, when we started keeping track of this, I was, I don't know why I was surprised, but it's, it's like, almost sixty percent of what we do is actually for someone else. And I guess it's just simple math, there's more towns than our one, so, right? But many of these towns are kind of in, uh, the first responder business. They, they charge Ripley a fee to provide them coverage. They might charge, the, I, I'm guessing Dover get, Dover gets paid by the county to do.
Atkinson.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's, uh, unincorporated, so it's.
Abbott.
I mean, I wonder if that's being.
Guilford?
Call, or how that?
No, it's a straight, it's a straight number.
Kingsbury, Abbott. So, and that's great, but we're responding to all these, we don't get any of that money.
I, I think, well, for one, I wanna err on the side of conversation, err on the side of caution with this conversation because we do not wanna pick up another town and say, okay, we wanna cover you, so you can pay us.
No, but what I, I'm thinking this whole thing should be treated as the business that it is. If, if funds are coming in to the Guilford arm of our mutual aid company, well, that needs to be accounted for.
Right, you guys are, Guilford's getting, in other words, Guilford gets paid for something, you guys are gonna respond to mutual aid. You can do fifty, sixty percent, whatever.
And we're not getting any compensation.
Most of these towns have other towns that they cover, and they're benefiting more than we are.
Right.
Yeah, and it creates more work for us, because now every time they get a call, we're responding. And now Dover's gone to a menu of fees that they're gonna bring in revenue, that you're gonna have to respond to every one of their calls.
They've been doing that for quite a while as far as the insurance side.
Right, but we don't share in that.
No, no.
But we, we get toned up for those calls.
Well, lots of chiropraxing, yeah.
Well, the, the.
Well, you could.
We could, there's potential there.
Sure. You're Downey Hill, you guys.
There's a lot more potential for us to call Dover for help on a chiropraxing than there is for Dover calls.
I know, but it's, it's there.
I think the concept is probably the ultimate answer for first responders in, in an area like ours. But it needs to be treated more like what it is, it's a, it's a company, it's, and.
It's a huge financial deal.
It's, it's very expensive.
And that's where you guys are up against it, because you're trying to do the right thing for the town of Sangerville.
Right.
But the reality is, you're doing the right thing for sixty percent of the other towns. But you don't have any support from any of those towns' funding laws.
No funding law. And I, I think, I mean, can you correct me from wrong on that, but that, that conversation really needs to be had.
I totally agree with you.
But as far as, but as far as for you guys, that's where you get stuck listening to us, as you guys go shopping, pencil, what are you gonna do?
We have the best of work of them, those fire departments, if we need them, for sure. We have a direct relationship with them, but it doesn't help the monetary.
Correct, correct.
And that's, I understand, and like Chad said, that's obviously is way above.
And, and we've been talking about this in the, in the fire service part for the last ten years of, of having one, this county fire department. And just like the city of Bangor, you have your main house, and then you got house number two and house number three.
When you, when you go to Florida, if, it, it is a car accident in Tampa, the trucks don't say Tampa on them. And that's a huge city, everything is county. And they got plenty of people, but they know it's more efficient to run it that way. We're just, we're back two hundred years ago, every little village had their own little thing, and we still haven't.
Every, same as at school.
And we, we struggle on the dispatch. We, we can't even keep up with the times to, Penosca, Penosca County dispatches years ahead of ours, and.
Our radio hasn't, radio system hasn't been updated since the seventies.
The radio, the radio system is absolutely phenomenally bad. And two years ago, they did a radio study and they went up to, uh, what's that, Hailings and Back?
Oh, you had to ask.
Well, they, they went up there just to find out that their computer had never even been hooked up ever.
Oh, my gosh.
It was all installed and all put down, the wire was hanging there, it was, it had never been hooked up once.
That is so bad.
I mean, it's, it, it takes bad to a whole new level. When they did the radio study and it came up to be.
Whoops.
Well, I can't remember what the number was, but the number was huge, like well into the millions to redo it, and they shut it down.
Wow.
And you got Penosca County running right by us, and you got state police that can go to press guy up and call one of their other cars in Portland. On radio, we'll talk just like it's plain as day. We can't even talk to Dover.
Wow.
There's a ton of, like you said, rest of that little tiny.
Yeah, it's all, everybody's little thiefdom.
But at the same token, the county taxes are increasing at an astronomical level.
Yeah, and that's.
And I think that eventually they're gonna be forced to do the countywide fire department. They're just gonna be forced to.
I think the mutual aid might be the framework for this. But I, and I do, I, it's, we need to be the guys, I mean, we're the little person in the puzzle. So everybody's not gonna be responsive to us, but we're also the one that's getting beat out.
But that's what I'm saying, we're sixty percent is somewhere else.
Right, sixty percent of your budget is going to.
I'm curious how much of, like theirs is as well, how much they're running.
In theory, the calls ratio should be the same.
Should be roughly, yeah.
But, but the compensation is totally different.
Well, I mean, you, you guys know better than us, how many times do you roll Guilford into Sangerville? How many times do you roll Dover into Sangerville? You know, compared to how much you go there.
This past year, I think, maybe, maybe half dozen times.
This year has been different because we haven't had in-town buyers, very, barely at all. And then next year, we might have ten.
Well, when Jeff and, when Jeff and I were working together, we had a handshake agreement, because we both have so many guys out of town during the day that if there was something fire related or an extraction, that we were both coming.
Sure.
Coming just to get the people.
Yep.
So chimney fires, for example.
But that's kind of a different scenario. I mean, that's more because you knew where you were both at at staffing levels and, you know, that's fifty fifty back and forth.
You, you hear people say it all the time, I drove by a building on fire the other day and there was six firefighters holding the hose and forty-seven of them standing around drinking coffee. You hear people say that all the time, it's not, it's really not that, it's true, really. I mean, not the six people fired, but, but what they don't see is the, how many times that they've rotated.
Sure.
People out, and then two bottles per guy, and you're held to such a higher standard nowadays.
You have two bottles and you have to rehab for this long, and during that time, you're gonna do anything, blah, blah, blah.
Right, so you are standing.
So, there is a lot to it.
I don't know what you guys are under for a time crunch, but I have one more topic I need to discuss with, with you guys, uh, that don't involve people's names. I don't mind bringing it up on the recorder, it's nothing bad, I don't wanna say anything mean about anybody, but. It's a moment of your guys' position that I'm in right now, what we're gonna do moving forward.
Do you wanna go into exactly a position?
Honestly, it's you, it's your protection, it's not ours.
It's your, it would be your request.
I'm good with having a recorder.
Okay.
So, so I think it's time to.
Go on the air caution.
Yeah, yeah.
No, seriously.
No, yeah, I, I think it's time to look at a path forward for the chief's position that I'm in right now. A couple of years ago, I told you guys I'd do it till two thousand twenty-five, which is still, still my plan, but at that time, we didn't have anybody that could possibly take my spot. Well, now we do, we have somebody who could possibly take my spot. And I think it makes perfect sense that in two thousand twenty-four, give, give us the opportunity to swap roles and let me be underneath him for a year. And give it that year.
I kinda like that idea.
So basically, um, I'm at assistant chief now, he's chief, like we would just swap for a year.
Yep, see how it goes.
And then, cause, you know, ultimately, he doesn't want to always have that responsibility, cause he's.
Well, the truth is, when I'm gonna graduate sex school in two thousand twenty-five, where we have no kids and we have no, we can go wherever we want.
I can't see us having an objection to that fact.
That's a good plan.
I think it's a great idea.
That's kind of what we had discussed, that way, I have somebody that's been in the shoes to be there with me while I grow and.
I can't think of anybody I would rather have for a new chief to mentor than having you underneath him and wait until twenty-five and you.
Yeah.
And then you walk out the door.
Totally agree with that.
You know what I mean? I think that's a better option.